There is nothing.
You didn't get sick?
I don't think so.
Mine didn't.
Well, they closed the school this year.
There's like.
I wonder if that was gonna be the. It was too. He said. The news says everyone's gonna get some.
Are you recording Christina?
I am.
Good. I'll call me in order. We'll spend some pleasure regions on this. Nick, would you like to move the agenda, please? Would you like to move the agenda? Approval of the agenda?
I'll approve the agenda.
Won't you approve?
One second.
Any discussion? Almost a bear.
I.
I opposed. None. Which was bad. Full business. Public Works and Police Facility, where are we at?
Uh, the value engineering meeting is tomorrow morning at ten thirty here at City Hall. Uh, representatives from Woodset, TNT Construction in the city will be present. I'm requesting at least one councilman. At at least, I'm requesting a council member to be present. Don. After which, um, then the process with, um, USDA on revising the initial budget and the operating budget for the project will commence and need to have that into Angela Devacquoy by the end of this week. So that the state and feds can review it so that we continue to see when I'm not here. The whole project receives a little lot of work to do tomorrow. Hopefully we get it all done tomorrow. If we put it off any longer, it's gonna take longer for us to start.
How many people do we have on this meeting?
Uh, besides a counselor, myself and Mike, we have two people from Woodset, potentially three. We have a representative, one for sure, from TNT and a representative from I think it's numbers could be there as well.
Good enough.
Uh, that's probably too much, but.
Very good.
More gets done with less people, but there's a lot of other things that have to be put through each. You know, with Seth's house, as an engineer, they have to make sure the lines are still right. Because it's their architectural contract with USDA that their name is on. And USDA has to sign off on whatever may, if hopefully it's nothing major that changes the whole scope of the project.
Any other questions, both on third?
Is that when they make changes?
Yes. Oh, that's what that is. Okay.
Rescue Act funding.
Uh, I provided to the council the final rule overview from the federal government. It got sent down late January. I had a brief opportunity today to go through it, to look through for the recommendation to see if televising and judging would be approved. Um, I didn't see anything specific in there and they recommended for more clarification of eligible expenses that you go through the clean water revolving loan eligibility from the EPA and then the water state revolving fund, the drinking water as well. So I've got some thoroughly up the packets to go through and see if that stuff, if it qualifies or not before I can make any recommendations to you guys. But, um, if you're interested in reviewing that final rule, that really gives the city a better understanding of some more details of what's approved. On page thirty seven of that document goes through water and in water and sewer infrastructure legibles. Yeah. If you're just wanting to see that part. Some of the language in there is a little bit broad, but in general, it's more detailed than the original interim rules that were provided last summer. But I want to make sure that it it's followed before we put a bunch of money into something that. That pretty much takes up the majority of what I said. Are really bored, we can't sleep one night. Those two documents from the EPA.
You can mute her. I'm telling.
Um, letter C or letter D?
Oh, sorry, it's good fun. It's come to first.
Um, either one of them I don't, so.
Okay.
Sorry. Yeah, um, I'm still waiting on the estimates from JD Construction for the I need to get, light a fire under grabbing half and get a number before the council meeting because I'm afraid it waits too long. It's gonna hold up the project when snow is on. I want to make sure all that is done before spring. I'll see if I can push him anywhere before the seven.
A whole bunch of fun stuff with the city sales there.
Yeah, so the city's sales tax, um, presentation I gave you guys last month, the final presentation that was sent to the House Tax Committee. Um, I provided to you a list from the League of Minnesota Cities Representatives, but there's thirteen cities and two counties that are requesting, um, local sales tax this year. So the tax committee is 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 gonna be very busy in the next couple of weeks. Um, Representative Matt Crossall has drafted the bill to the committee to hear. Um, that should be in front of them Thursday morning. Uh, in addition to that, the tax committee is going to be having a testimonial.
That's its first hearing?
Yeah, that's the first one they got on the books according to the lead. Um, that just happens to be on the first day I was planning on taking vacation. So I'm pushing that back a day so that that can be heard. Um, Matt Russell will be on there. Luckily, it's virtual. So, um, it can be done through Zoom. So I'll sit on that at one o'clock. I don't know where Black Duck will be in that hearing on the time frame. Basically, what will happen is the bill will get heard. Um, the city will present its its argument for needing local sales tax, which basically outlines the presentation that was sent to the House Tax Committee members. They'll have the opportunity to ask the city why and the reasons for applying for it and why they should prove it. And then they'll move on to the next government agency.
We don't need testimony from any counselors or?
I think anything written or otherwise that a counselor wants to provide, especially if it's, um, personal. How it affects this community, what to do for this community would be a really good submittal to the House Tax Committee. Because we can't expect everybody to be on that.
No, it's and is it, uh, if you provide a written testimonial or something, you just give that, send it, email it to Matt or?
You could, yeah, you can either send it to me and I can forward it to Matt or you can send it to Matt yourself if you wish. Um, either one will work.
Just wanna make sure that someone's
junk mail.
Junk mail.
Yeah.
You know.
Um, I have, I have his. I have his, um, administrative assistance email. That would probably be the best place for it to go. And I can forward that to the council if you wish.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay. First name is Brandon, so if you see, where do you know? I'll send it to you guys.
My typing skills aren't great, but I know somebody that can. Okay. Any other questions for the local sales tax? Work to the website.
Amanda Schaefer sent me on sixteenth a couple of versions to pick from of the website. It felt since the council was, you know, approved of moving forward with a different developments and the different company that they should be involved in some feedback of these options.
Good.
I mean, they, to me, they look fairly.
Well.
Well.
Yep. Yeah. I mean, that's what I saw.
They're working, they're working with marketing tools that we already exist, we have, they haven't come up to take any pictures. We approved it in November.
Right.
Unless you want a great big pile of snow in the middle of your website. I don't know what else you're gonna put on it right now. Yeah.
Are you five?
I don't. I'm sorry. I think she's looking more for just, you know, focused layout than anything else.
Okay, so maybe.
Yeah, I mean, I'm a big proponent of having the document, you know, things that are very iconic for her city in the callouts, but I know with that going forward, when spring comes around and things start looking prettier, that we're gonna get some more marketing ability on there with our own drone or community pictures to
True.
provide. Yeah.
So basically what she wants is the tabs, okay, the
Yeah.
like, photos are interchangeable, they can kind of go.
Yeah. I mean, one of the things that I I noticed right off the bat is, um, we really wanted the campground to be at the top and that's not even there. Yeah.
Yeah, well, and it's hard to, it's hard to tell what your, if it's easier with this, because we're not. Well, it's an office.
Yeah, no.
For like, what is.
It's just a layout right now, Bob and Joe. Yeah, it's way.
So for us to say that. Okay, we're sorta okay with it. But we know what we're getting. I mean.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I'm looking at a picture of a picture.
Well, there's, there's two versions.
And but there's still.
And it's still.
There's, there's a picture of a picture, whether there's two versions or not. And he's not getting the feel like it would be on.
Well, yeah, I don't think that's.
Yeah.
Right. I guess they would call this the data level of it.
Huge something, I guess.
I like.
But.
I see yours.
That is, that is right.
Right. Guys like version two? Is that what I heard?
But it's more broad of it. It shows more broad of it. Oh.
Well, I'm not, I'm not what you're, you're looking at this, this square. This presentation, different picture. This here, this is the layout.
Where your tabs are, I like.
And this is the other layout where it's broken up here. That's what she's asking about. Correct? So there, that's. I like that there's a search bar in the first person, right at the top.
Now, she was the one that was here.
In November.
Yeah, she was the one to hear the picture.
Correct.
Sell this, I mean, she could sell it. Maybe we need to bring her back.
I don't think that's gonna happen right now.
I have to speak here.
Yeah, go ahead. I've been working with them and I, I, it's funny to hear you guys say this stuff because I, for Christina, I'm having a little bit of difficulty with the golf courses also. The one thing I did do, and it might be easier if you just let Christina make the decision or one person, because like what I did, because I was having such difficulty with it, is I did a separate Zoom meeting with, um, the gals, because now Amanda's on vacation, so she's not even there. So then I couldn't talk to somebody. So I had the gals that are working specifically on the website have another Zoom meeting with me. And then it was a little bit easier because then they kind of walked me through it, because like all the things that you're saying, like the search bar and like how quick and easy, you want to be able to quickly go right to who your council members are. You want to be able to see who's, what the fire department's doing or like whatever your little sub things are. And so if you kind of just tell, I mean, I don't mean to like push this on you, but it's almost easier to not have everyone's opinions on it, but to just know what you want to have right there in front of your face and like the departments and like whatever, like whatever you didn't like about your old one, basically just tell her what you didn't like about the old one so that she can correct that. And then with that Zoom meeting, it really did help. It did help me because I was, I don't know, and like I asked about like paying for things and how many clicks you do and she's like, oh, well, if you click on that and you go five more clicks, that's all five of your pages and you were only allowed five pages. So it it's really not a lot that you can do with it. So I, in that, I just think it would help maybe if you did just try to talk to like one person again and ask for more clarity because it's, it's pretty vague.
Good information.
I don't know.
Yeah, thanks for sharing.
But maybe just a Zoom meeting with her or something like that, because I mean, they just won't do it with me.
Is that something you want to do, Christina?
Not in the next ten days, no.
Well, you're, when do you leave it on? No, I'm just.
I'll tell you when the council meeting is done.
Okay.
All right.
That's all right.
Where you going, Rick? Where's your fight number?
When's your house gonna be empty?
All right.
All right.
So.
Not feeling well yet.
Something that that the way we want to do this, just like.
Look it over and send me the feedback so I can forward it out.
Take the ball and run with it.
It's really hard to share all that.
It is.
So we're all kind of.
If you have another ten meetings.
Exactly.
Yeah. Let's.
You know, I think we're a small for a few more.
Well, ultimately, the hope is that all of these websites, Gulf Liquor Store, Chamber, City, and all launch at the same time. Because what thing's gonna happen is the existing website's gonna shut down and the new websites are gonna launch, so we can't delay one for the other. Because as soon as.
She gave you, um, websites to look at, like specific, because that did your concert or something like that?
Yes. Okay.
Like the presentation.
Yeah, well, I, it was in my presentation too, and I didn't pay attention, but like she said, go look specifically at like town country clubs. And if you love town country clubs, we can just do that, you know? And that was easier for me to navigate because I was like, just do it like that, because I like this, you know?
Right, that was in November.
Stuff. Okay, yep. She, did she pick a city for you? We looked at a couple, but I also, I I said Big Falls for sure.
Oh, okay.
Because Big Falls is simple and easy and the campground's right at the top, which was a big callout for this community. And knowing that the Gulf and the liquor store were gonna be completely separate, that was a big win for us, so everything else should fall into place.
Yeah.
Shouldn't be as difficult as the first redevelopment from what we have now.
Will we still be able to easily find the liquor store website or the Gulf website by going to this?
Yeah.
They'll lead you to it.
Yeah. Just don't forget to send feedback. Right, because if the city wants to provide input, they need to provide input. I don't like, I don't mind speaking for you guys. But I mind speaking for you guys. There's, do you get thirty minutes also a month? So what that is, is she'll get thirty minutes, they'll play with it, that she's allowed. And like Dave said, like for any little things that she wants to add to it, they said it only takes four minutes for them to be like, okay, so they'll charge you per minute in thirty minutes to get a month. So like when you're looking at pictures of things that you think are stagnant or like, oh, our website is, this kind of like, it needs some fire again.
I'm wondering if the stopwatch is.
They are. They are, they they go by the minute. It's, it's pretty standard when it comes to the line development. I'm not gonna say it's the same as gas prices, but.
So you also, uh, it's a whole other, we're not.
Whole other conversation.
We're not doing that. We're, we're gonna, you, if somebody has something they want to say, look the website, you know?
Thank you.
She'll move it.
How fast would you like that? A weekend, like today?
Yeah.
Yeah, anytime.
Anytime.
All right. The library budget surplus. Update. Or you have.
Yeah. I have no idea. Um, to be honest with you, I just. We just got back in town Monday. I haven't been home. So.
You guys haven't had a meeting yet?
No, it's, it's later in the month.
Okay. We'll wait.
And then I'll see the. I think they finally scheduled the library meeting for the Migi or Black Duck. Um,
What's the Black Duck?
Blackberry. I don't have my phone with me, so it's been just kind of, I've been just chasing.
It's gonna be from March.
Yes.
For that then. Anything new with the, uh, E and B update?
Uh, not yet, no.
Good. That brings us to the planning commissioner vacancy notice. And that is why I have invited Mr. Wilson Wenat. I think he is a good candidate. Experience with construction. And I would imagine with all the fencing, you've read a few platforms.
Just about. So.
Tell us about yourself.
Okay. So John Wilson Wenat lived in the midge all my life, moved up to Hines. Um, Owen Wilson's son field service, I've mentioned, we're a full service fencing contractor. Um, my background is in residential construction to a point, then is industrial mill rate and welding and including pumper beer. So I think my background in that pertains to some building projects that we have going on here. I work fairly closely with planning department in the midge for all fencing needs. So we have a little bit of experience there. And just generally. Yes. You guys have any questions?
Because it, uh, feel free to ask him whatever you want.
Yeah.
But, uh, if I I would be comfortable approving him to the position at the next council meeting if that's. That'd be doable. And if we can just get a formal letter of intent.
Yep.
And that would take care of that.
Can you go in a little bit more in depth than what you've done?
So.
With the planning board?
Just chatting about some of their stuff. The, so I worked more with Casey, basically, before he left. And I'm, I haven't had enough time to sit down with Jamie or Jamie and kind of see see exactly what he's about as far as dealing with it, but as far as some city planning, which kind of setting setting it up for success as far as keeping moving happy. The I guess just a whole lot of chatting. And figuring out why certain things don't fit in certain areas.
In a zoning state.
They're. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
And how familiar are you with the zoning?
Not at all, but I'm very. And if there's any classes, I can take more of it on that. No problem.
And he's going to do it.
Yeah, I was just gonna say. You have your time.
It's a, it's a once a month. Yeah. Unpaid, yeah, that's fine. All the, all the good benefits there.
Yeah. Yeah.
So your commercial fencing company, you guys install or design or everything?
Everything. So we, we're familiar with gold by home.
Yeah.
We have their fence. So there's just under eight hundred feet of six foot and eight foot wood fencing there and there is just under eight hundred feet or six hundred uh, six foot block. There's there's three channel gates, one steel frame of wood gate. A slide.
And I imagine if we need to go off of GIS
Yep.
locations and property lines.
Yep.
Have you ever had any issues with installation on property lines in the past?
No, because so when we, when we install fence, we either if the homeowner isn't a hundred percent certain on it, we either talk to the neighbor and figure that out or I call a surveyor. They just survey it for me and get that situated. And we try to keep back to at least six inches from the edge of the line. But I'm fairly familiar with, I use the GIS software that is available to public.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, when you're looking at a map, it's.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's pretty result.
Do you understand the difference between a business zone and an industrial zone?
Yeah. Other than looking at yeah. There, there's a reason there's. So.
Checking.
Yep.
I want anybody being thrown into this and not having an idea what they're looking at.
And I, I have absolutely no problem. That's no problem with this.
No. Not on the planning.
Yeah, because there's, you know, a few questions that, you know, popped up. Yeah, cause there's, you know, a few questions that, you know, popped up by the time and like you kinda. Why is that there? Uh, prefer not to have that.
Yeah.
Uh if there's nothing else for Wilson, we'll keep moving.
He's formally recommending that for you.
I am.
Easy enough.
One more thing, I, I can give you guys business cards, but you have all my contacts, I have myself. So.
Thank you.
Oh, let's see, new business. We'll go to B.
And I was gonna be a presentation, so. So you guys got my packet um that I had to do together for you guys to look at, what kind of I've been up to. I've been busy. Um so currently there is no computer system, don't think golf course. Obviously, I think that's a need, there's no point of sale system that's really up to date. Um so those are my top two, and you can see I kinda numbered like what my little wishes are, or things like goals, things that I'm trying to like. On the top of my list of things that I feel like need to be addressed, I guess, if that's what you want me to say. Um so number one was the hardware program, and that's all going through um the city's IT person. The software will be coming through Club Cadet or Club Caddy. Um do you guys have any questions on either one of those before I keep rambling? I'm assuming you guys have questions on the software.
I would just over their high points for them.
I don't, just keep it, I'm on the golf court, so.
But, yeah, cause the board may not realize that our current.
So just give a quick run.
For the rest. Our current register system is probably from nineteen ninety five.
So how many minutes do I have here? Okay.
I, my, I did the old business in a half an hour, so you get at least fifteen.
Okay, so um the hardware package obviously is fully self explanatory, it's a computer system. Um with, you know, the cash drawer and all the stuff that I need to operate. Um with the software program, it's through Club Caddy, it is um golf specific. So one of the biggest things that I love about it is you will be able to book your tee times online. Um and I feel like that's something that's kind of becoming pretty popular, um and it would be really good for um for knowledge wise for the golf course employees to know what we have coming. Anytime, at any point, if we have, the golf course has a frost delay, or if there's a tournament that's booked that weekend, if you're gonna have a family reunion, if you wanna golf. You can always look at the calendar on the website, and those times, those tee time will be booked out, so you'll know that you can't. So it's a better way for the public to be able to see the calendar at any. Um the other benefit to the cat, the Club Caddy is, it's all iCloud, so um Christina and Paige will be able to look at any of the. Reporting at any time up here, um it also serves as a time clock for employees, so they'll be clocking in on the software, and they'll be able to pull all the payroll. Um information from their, from their own login, yep, and each person can be assigned different levels, so you know, Christina can see. Anything, then certain employees down there will have their own login and they'll be able to see what they need to see. Um. What else? Um it comes with templates for flyers to help you do some marketing and advertising.
Are there any?
Yeah, I made him, no, I made him send me some, because I wanted to see what they looked like. I did a demo with him for. I don't know how long it was, maybe like forty-five minutes, and the poor guy, I've been bothering him quite a bit lately, he lets me text him at any point, so I've been texting him stuff. Um this software program also can be twenty-four seven um support, which is super awesome, because if anybody has any questions on a Sunday, you can still get help with your program. Um it also has trainings on Tuesdays and Thursdays for any employees that need refresher, or if there's a new employee. They have like a Zoom meeting that they can go on and they can get training through them. Um and like I said, I've been texting this guy, he responds literally right away, it's, it's pretty nice to have that. Um I did talk to him about rentals, um if we added different things to write down there, I am capable of using um. Part of their system to also do like a waiver, so they can still sign waivers through this, and it'll come out on my receipt printer. Um I did talk to him about um in the future, if we ever wanted to take on any park reservations through. The golf course, if we ever wanted to kind of like do parks and things together, there is a capable um capability on this program. Right now, he said the most they really do with that area is, there's a couple golf courses that own homes on their golf courses, that would be nice ones. And they do rent those out, and so I just said, it's not something that obviously that we're gonna do, but it's something that I would like to consider in the future, you know, to add that to the software, he said, sure. Especially if you give them suggestions to keep building their software programs up and they kind of cater to what you need. Um so, yeah, um.
That's a great actually. Park to the course.
I think so too.
You know, like seasonal rentals out of the campground.
Yeah, anything like that, and it's, if it's a Saturday, once again, you're sitting at home on a Saturday or Sunday, you're like, hey, we should talk about the family vacation that we're trying to plan in Black Duck. They would be able to go right under that and see what is open and what's available, because it'll all be on that calendar, they don't have to wait until the. City Hall opens and things like that, so it's something that I feel like we can grow and use more and more and more as we start kind of getting into it. So I think, I think it would be really neat, um it tracks all my members, so like once my members are in, all their information stays in there. Um it also allows me to do a loyalty program, which I think is pretty cool, um it'll keep track of how many times you're there, and then I'd like to start like some kind of a. A gift or some kind of a discount or something like that, um it adds up to so many points or punch cards or however you wanna do it. Um. Just, it's just a better way of tracking, I think, all the members, no more coming in and having to sign, you know, that just come in and I see him, I can just, oh, fat you, you know, that kind of stuff, so.
This is a long time coming for the course to move over to an electronic. Point of sale system, it's been needed for several years, and one of the reasons I endorse what Misty has found is solely because the reason I've. Made sure the course at the, the clubhouse had internet this last summer was because our current. Uh credit card system is gonna be obsolete as it comes to security for people's credit cards and more than people are using them. And this will help ensure that our guests are actually secure.
More and more people are just scanning their phone, aren't they?
Yeah, yeah, and we just don't have that option.
Yeah, so um I, I just think, I think it's something that is gonna be needed.
Alright, I think we weren't gonna do that. Free uh. Online. Um. Okay. I mean, we talked about that.
Online tee times?
Yeah.
No, to book your tee time online?
Yeah. Remember, we, at that last meeting, we were, yeah, last meeting on the seventh, I brought that up then, when I came there, let's see if I, yeah, you could do your online, depends on that, on that.
And I said no to that?
Yeah.
No, I must have heard you correctly then, at that point, Misty hadn't even looked.
Well, yeah, we had not.
Yeah, when, when I first started looking, Christine and I went down there together initially, and I was like, oh, you know, this, our cash register, I was kinda like, hey, you know. Um and she's like, well, I think we need to look at any point of sale system, so I started looking at really simple ones, like Square and Clover, like the ones that are just kind of popular, the chill stores. And then the more I did investigating into those, I sat through some of their demos. And then it just kind of like, this doesn't make sense for us, and that's kind of when I started finding the golf specific. Software programs, and this just makes perfect sense, I mean, it just, it, it just fits the mold really well, and it's still got a really nice point of sale system in there for all like beer and snacks and things like that.
Does it go off?
Yep, yes, it's a point of sales also, okay, yeah.
Yes, is there any part of this that would help the customers bring more money?
Well, reporting wise, it's gonna help keep, I would think, things feel clearer, so you're budgeting better and seeing your expenses better. Um I think it's gonna help with marketing things because of flyers and things like that, uh members. I'll be able to link all like, every, all my members' emails together, so when I wanna let everybody know that there is a end of the year golf tournament for you guys. Everybody can get that information, it's a better communication system, nobody will be missing anything. Um so I mean, I think it's gonna, is it gonna make us a ton of money? It hopefully it will help generate people to become members and keep everybody in the group and keep happy people too, you know.
It's gonna be more efficient.
By Joe, the efficiency.
People will be coding things incredibly nonstop. It's going to be a win on the amount of paper that gets pumped back and forth between tee times and renting parts out and getting waivers done and then letting customers up. Has been cumbersome and it's extremely challenging for the employees.
To make sure all those boxes are checked. Online, and you know, this is, this whole thing that I'm looking at right now, um the hardware and the software, and then also getting a website, those three things right there. The decision had already been made before I was even hired in the position to get a website, so what sense does it make for me to have a website, and I don't have a computer down there to look at my own website? Uh you wanna see it? I can go get it, it's about, it's about this big, and it's donated, and it's very difficult to look at, I mean, it's way smaller than what you guys are using. It, it, it's fine, it's great, it's a donation, but for me to be able to go on and actually do my job, I don't really wanna work on a. Eight inch.
So you said, so you can go online, just get your tee time key.
Yeah, yeah, you should be able to.
Okay.
You should be able to notify community part, um and I'm, I'm pretty sure, I'm like nine percent sure, I usually be able to pay for, and that was something that I kind of bumped into, like. I'm trying to deck all the dots here, and this is my first time doing this, so for me, it's learning experience also, but when I was talking to my web designer. You know, I told her, I'm like, well, as soon as my software program, I, you know, if I pull the trigger on that, then. On my website, there's gonna be a big dial at the top that says book your tee time now, so when you click on that, it should get you right into my software, so you should be able to book your tee time and pay for it. And I'm assuming, and we were talking about this, you should also be able to pay for your membership then too. So my software program and the website, we kind of come together, so, and that I'm hoping will help people maybe promote more people to become members, because it's right there. And it's not, well, I need to go get a mail, and I need to go into the city hall.
It was like the efficiencies that people expect right now.
Yeah.
You go to a resort and make a reservation or whatever, everything is unlocked, and it's just what people are used to, and we, we need to jump through antiquated versions that we have.
Yeah, it really would have.
It really would.
Yeah, eliminate the, you know, and that's still something people, a lot of people are still looking for.
It is, they're gonna do it always.
Yeah. So with the combination of getting the hardware, getting the software, we have a new website coming, which I've been working on, um. I just started an Instagram, I already had done the Facebook, so that kind of worked, but I still, I already had that. So you'll also be able to go on our website, click on our Facebook, click on our Instagram, which is also gonna be showing pictures and activities and things like that. Um so hardware, software, I think that kind of covers that first two things that I'm dreaming of, um number three, I threw in here, this actually was something that I wasn't really even thinking was gonna get my. Your tips, but it's really easily gonna be done, a food prep area, currently there's nothing down there with proper um. Like food prep area, you have to have um a three compartment sink, and you have to have a hand washing station in order for you to put a program people legally. I was on the, I, I thought at first that they were gonna put huge hurdles for me, I was never gonna get through it, it really isn't that difficult, um. I had JPHI plumbing come and look at putting a three compartment sink upstairs in the backside of the kitchen. And the gal from Vermigie said that she would allow me to use the sink in the kitchen or a hand washing station, which I thought was pretty cool, although it does have to have another sink in the kitchen. So that would, those with, with the three compartment sink upstairs, that allows me instantly be able to put frozen pieces or any of those like ten concessions or anything like a. Hot dogs or something like that upstairs, I really wanna also be able to do it downstairs, so we can have one staff person be kind of do it all. In order to do that, all I have to do is add a hand washing sink to the office is where I'm thinking of putting it, because it meets the wall to the utility room. Um JPHI came in and shot me a quote, and he said he was gonna shoot it pretty high, because he didn't wanna put it on paper quite yet, so four thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars was his quote. Um and that's just for his, for our, um I also have Greg's plumbing coming up next week, give me a second. Just because I, I, you know, more than asking. Um and then the sinks themselves, um I have Kevin kind of watching some online, you can find sinks from closed up restaurants. So we're trying to keep our eyes out for that, otherwise, um you know. If you had to purchase the stuff between the two, a thousand dollar, if not less than that, you know, because. You can really find those things, and we don't need anything fancy, like as of right now, the picture washing is a piece of better, so.
You don't have to have a huge.
No, I just wanted to get it in there to meet the code and make everybody happy. So, so I'm pretty excited about that, because I think adding some of those little concession stand items, especially when, you know. You know, you have weed search tournaments and things like that, and if you can advertise, and they know that they can come there, and they can do the pizza. And you know, there's other options, just doing frozen pizzas, I thought about, you know, unlike Jake's Pizza or places like that, and having like a better pizza. Ideas like that, um like I said, the hot dogs, just some simple things like that. Yeah, right, during the Jake's Pizza tournament. So, so that's my top three things that um I think would be pretty um exciting to start with, and then if you go to the next one, um. This one is um kind of a reach for me, um. This would be something that I would like to do later, if I could, um.
Everybody take a breath.
Yeah, yeah, I know, take a breath, it's not as terrible as it looks either, but if you guys have been downstairs in the clubhouse, um it's carpeting, it's original carpeting that was put in there. It's not in terrible shape, I'm not sure if it smells bad um in the women's bathroom or in the men's bathroom, because. I didn't put my nose down there, I'm curious to why there's so many air fresheners in the building, but there is carpet all the way around all the toilets in the back room. That's kind of how, I mean, even if I was gonna clean the toilet myself, I normally like spray a whole toilet down and I clean it from top to king. Like even your cleaners and any moisture like that, I just, I, I have a hard time with carpet in the restroom. It's gross, um so I just, just a quick estimate, because I haven't had all the time in the world, but I did have Fuller Insulating come, or I gave him the blueprint. He shot me a quote for just the locker rooms, and the locker rooms on the floor front are the restrooms, that was three thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. That's with that same stuff that you guys put at Wayside Rest, that um oxy flooring or whatever. Um and then to do the entire floor to add on, he was saying, he said add another eight thousand one hundred and thirty. The way I'm looking at this, I'm, I'm pretty sure with, with the world is going right now, that these prices are probably at least double from what you guys probably think it. So that comes to twelve thousand dollars, and it, it is a lot of money, so. An alternate to that is um just doing the locker rooms, just because I think we should have some kind of hard flooring, and it doesn't have to be that a park either, I can go get floors for them. Which I think is probably about the same, but then I did get the carpet square quote, these exact same carpets where you guys have here. Um for the main area, so that would be three thousand two hundred and fifteen instead of the eight thousand, so you know, you could go three thousand. With Tommy in the bathrooms and then the three thousand dollars for carpet squares on the outside, and the outside is not really like what I'm super worried about, but. It's the bathrooms that I'm more worried about, but then I keep thinking, if we're gonna rip up one, you know, do you want it to be going, so that's definitely something that I'm just looking at, like. Hopefully in the future, but I realized that that's kind of a question one, and you probably have to do.
And then two, you have to look at how much wear and tear those carpets can get.
Yeah.
And how, you know, are you gonna clean them every year, you can clean them.
Yeah.
And what does that cost in regards to getting something that.
Is a done deal, yeah.
Is they have epoxy and all up to. Slits on.
I did talk to, I did talk to Don Jordan, like, like she's an avid golfer, she said she golfs seven days a week, and I did call her and I asked her, and she said it's not an issue. So I said, do you wear cleats? And she said, yeah. What she said, so.
But.
What else, well, there's plenty of golf courses that you have flooring in, and you can check out.
Yeah.
But you couldn't put a linoleum.
In the bathrooms, you probably get away with it, but I don't know.
I saw that, there's so many different qualities too. And there is linoleum around the men's journal and around the men's toilet. Um and then it just like a step out and you're back onto the carpet, it's just a step in and then a step out, and you get the carpet kind of comes up, so there is a linoleum in there right now. Restroom, but it's over thirty years. Yeah, it's original, and then the linoleum is in the bathrooms upstairs also, which I'm not even beginning, because I mean, they just need to be cleaned, they're old and ugly, but. But my focus is more just that. But my focus is more just that restroom area. So, so I'm just out kind of shopping around, um. And then number five was my miscellaneous things and it's just a few things that obviously I had to do a new logo for the website. The logo that we had down there with a originally a drawing from our art teacher. And it wasn't, um, the right format for that. So, um, I had them do a new website or a new logo for the whole golf course. Um, coffee pot down there is broken. Um, and I would like to replace it back to what we had down there. Um, there's no office chairs. I threw an office chair on there so that we can actually do some work down there. I threw the hot dog steamer and the pizza oven on there also, just because if I ever do get these things, obviously we have a little bit of equipment. And then ice machine and I had came in and talked to Christine this morning a little bit about the process of how. We have a huge ice machine. We have a company that just delivers bays and. When you buy a six pack, we break the bay, drop part of the ice and instead of giving you the whole bag, it just had like a. Had a real smooth system, the way they did it. So I just priced out some ice machines. Give them a scoop in their cooler instead of frosting bays and doing partial bays and things like that. A little bit of a waste for that. Um.
So you don't have a piece of open or any of these things down?
Can't, don't have a three compartment sink and hand wash.
Okay, they didn't really labor all that.
Oh my goodness.
All this time, they've been serving microwave or?
And that's another thing that I, I just got off the phone to with, um. I'm gonna try to amp up a little bit of those easy deli things. I do work in the kitchen at the school. So they have like the Uncrustables, um. Like Rice Krispie bars, granola bars, breakfast bars. They need some really nice coffee cakes that come in like little prepackaged things. But I kind of wanted to amp a little bit of that up this year, you know, until I can get, you know, something else going. But I think there's some really nice snacks out there right now that are repackage that I've seen. I worked at Castle Highlands, so.
You know, I know you're just putting into it, you know how much the golf course made last year or the year before?
Do I know how much the golf course made? No, I'd have to look those numbers back out. I think we're in the black and a lot of that blackness is due to a decision that was made by, I believe, um. Some prior decisions on helping build a water tower. So I think that's why we have a lot of, um, problems down right now. We have to wait a few years for those to get paid off. And then hopefully, you know, we can start swimming a little bit better on our own, but as of right now.
Sounds like you're not equipped. Yeah, well, the.
No, just. Yes, and I'm rubbing sticks together down there. I mean, really. Well, and that's like, that, that's another thing, like just, just get it down there, um. I have my fingers crossed on a few kayaks right now that I'm trying to get some money for, um. And to add some more rentals and then if that actually works out to do more kayaks, some paddle boards. You know, just to kind of keep growing some of that stuff, just to be like, hey, we're open. If the kids maybe to come over, if we could get more snacks in there, you know. They want to run their bikes and grab a Rice Krispie bar or.
You get it in the door and you get them in the car.
Yeah.
That's, that's the idea here.
Um, another thing, um, um, I think it'd be my. In my quick version here, the things that, um, what have I been doing? Uh, tons of research on that hardware package, software package, website design, new logo design, merchandise, core quotes. I'm trying to get a bunch of merchandise down there, like Max has said at our golf course, not much of a pro shop. You know, there's a few logo wear down there, but it's nothing that wants, it's not gonna blow your hair back. So I've been looking at new merchandise, the plumbing quotes, flooring quotes, new rental items, food options. I need to clean the clubhouse, research other courses. I've been looking at other courses pretty much every day. I'm on someone else's website, just getting information. Um, looking at the new snack bar options, planning a new halfway hut. That's something that I can kind of share with you guys. I did get, uh. Um, pretty much for sure, Northwood Lumber is going to be building a. Uh, what we're gonna call it yet, halfway hut maybe or something like that, um, on hole number five. Um, instead of doing a beverage cart, which I was kind of looking at. But with a nine hole course, it takes about two hours to get through. They are willing to put up a little hut on hole number five. That will have Northwood Lumber's name on it, cause they're gonna fund it for me. Um, and I can put snacks in there and, um. Beer and pop and water and Gatorades, things like that for you. So when you leave for a tournament, just take what you need right now and the hut's gonna be open. I'm gonna try to staff that when we have larger tournaments or, you know, if you only have a family or things like that there. So that's been, I think it's pretty great. And they're excited about it also. Um, been working on the prices for the rental items, um. I'm also trying to plan a special, um, event thing. So for, what did I say, ninety-five dollars? Um, I can have ten events down there and this is even before I get the sinks and stuff going. I'm allowed to have ten special events down there. Um, so what I'm hoping to do is to get that, purchase that license in the last Friday of every month. Kind of what the chamber used to do at the pond, just have it on the calendar. So the last Friday of every month, I would like to do like a barbecue night. Um, and then we'll do our own, um, like bring in our own food to get the coleslaw or salad to keep it that from BFF. And then some type of a grilling or things like that. And I've been talking to the health department on that, so I'm making sure like you tell me what I can do and I'm gonna do it. So, um, I did call back all the staff and I'm working on the summer schedule and we're working pretty hard on promoting all the art sponsorship programs also. So I just need. A match to get, help me get my little fire here going because our, you know, our budget really wasn't set up. With all of this kind of stuff in mind, you know, we had budgeted, I think, three hundred and eighty dollars was what we were. Yeah, for a point of sale system without knowing what was happening.
What, what Misty needs a head nod on, honestly, with this presentation is number one and two. We can't open, I don't feel as though the golf course should open without a sales system. And now is the time to really get that going because other entities in the city that. Put in new POS systems once they committed to taking that on and that was at the bar. By the time we ordered it, it still took six weeks for delivery and that's just supply chain at this point. Um, the, because the, because the county is our IT, um, Elton County MIS. The, that's following with the all-in-one computer system and what they can order for us is the county bills. The city out quarterly on any technology and services. So if the city gives Misty the head nod, all the hardware can get ordered through MIS and we won't get them until. The only thing she's gotta commit to is.
I think it's great. I think we need to come out of the woodwork.
You've seen a lot of head nods.
Mm-hmm. It's all gamble too. I mean, it comes down to it. There is gamble to it, but I don't see it growing if you don't.
Can't grow if you don't have a bait and you don't have a bait. You can't even speak, just reading my Kool-Aid through this, you know, I'm sorry, but, um.
We're not even talking about food, just to get the.
Yeah, but you're not gonna get people to come and they can't. I mean, that's gotta be a point of sale where she's gonna make some money. You've got to, you've got to increase your service.
Um.
One of the other things is our point of sale system is extremely, because it's so antiquated and so old. More the problem is that the staff that we're getting now are a younger generation and they're used to this. And nothing there is touchscreen and we even have, you know, um, people my age and a little bit older that are working there. That are used to this type of stuff and used to old systems and that system is extremely difficult to, to work with.
Yeah, you got my nod. I'm, I'm gonna try to find, I mean, I think there's other ways, you know, you know. Possibly hosting this, my first tournament, like would be in the spring. And I'm hoping to host that for the golf course and then also do a fall one. So I'm hoping to generate more income to help pay for my own expenses also that way. And I don't know if it comes from what we did raise the prices down there twenty percent, um. So, I mean. You know, with your comment, how many hot dogs am I gonna sell? I mean. Obviously, you know, Dunkin' Donuts sells a donut for free, you know, three dollars. They gotta sell a lot of donuts to pay, you know. I get that hot dogs aren't gonna make me a killing and I get that having the pizza option, but. If you ask people in this town, if you walk around like, oh, what do you think of the golf course? That place needs to get, you know, hey, get the food down there. Get, you know, that's the first thing people say. Another thing that I haven't really looked into because I think between Kristy and I could be, it's gonna be a nightmare. But, um, I think I can change my liquor license also. There's a way of doing that if I add some of those foods. That one's the food prep area. And they said that Minnesota is the last state right now that does three two. And a lot of people don't wanna mess with it anymore. So if we just keep looking down the road. It would be really nice to be able to change that liquor license also to a regular liquor license and. And I, I'm, I'm sorry, but I keep looking, I'm looking way past, you know, if I could set up a high top table down there. I know a, a few of my friends, even if they don't golf, would probably come down there and have a decent beer. You know, I mean, you know, so I wanna try to make it more of a, you know, people coming in, even if you don't wanna golf, come in there and have. My rubber hot dog and a piece of pizza, you know, like just to come down there and just be a part of the golf course. And the social.
Brian made a believer out of me.
Who?
Stretch and hot dogs.
Oh, at the, um, car show?
At the car show.
I don't know why they taste so good at the car show.
But yes, why don't we put, uh. One and two on the agenda for.
So I did notice that, that it's gonna cost two hundred and fifty dollars a month. I, and again, I mean, without seeing the numbers, how much does the golf course make that that would? Make up percentage?
I can't answer those kind of questions.
I honestly feel like. Those things that were, the cost per month. I think the golf course is gonna absorb it. I didn't even know it was there.
So some of those fees, Bobby Joe, we have a way of passing that off to our customer. Right now, the amount of credit, yes, with the, some of the merchant fees that we have, um, we absorb that. And on an annual basis, that can be anywhere from seventeen to two thousand dollars right here. Right, and I, I definitely think it's, yeah.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And I, I, I don't, I can't answer some of these questions because I don't have any flooring systems that are really awesome either. You know, so it's really hard to answer some of those questions. With the, with the percentage that we're increasing, that's gonna be what, four thousand dollars, I think it was on. One line item that I sat down and went through, um. The price increase with a tournament itself to pay for, you know, the, the fee upfront, there is another, there is another option. Um, we can talk to Club Caddy and we can exchange tee times. Um, and that can reduce our monthly costs. That's something I need to get into with them and decide kind of if, if that's something we wanna do. And what they'll do then is they'll sell our tee time. They keep the money and then it reduces our price.
Then you reduce your price.
Yeah.
It's just another.
It, it's a risk, but it works really well for our level hemisphere of golf courses. Because it's really difficult for us to get our word out that far out. And it's also kind of handy because. When they try to do it, they're gonna put, they're gonna market our golf course and they'll try to roll it into like the Verbo or. You know, some of that stuff in the area, they'll try to say, you know, they'll try to sell those tee times for us. And if I didn't do a program like that, then, um, they keep that tee time. They keep the booking for that. They get the income from it, then.
But you've gotten the advertisement.
And then we don't get charred in the center of it, yeah.
The chances of that, um, multiplying, doing the multiplier on your revenue is really high. Most people will come once, look at that way, and then if it's a rewarding or a good experience, they'll come back and pay again. So chances are on that type of a, of a buyback, that entity is gonna double their income anyway. Is there a minimum of tee times that you have to give up a month?
I think it's two. Okay.
Not a lot.
Okay.
No, it's not. And they'll market it on the off season for us too. So it doesn't sound like a lose situation to me. And then.
I think it should be on the next.
That two hundred and fifty dollars, you know, I, I see that and I'm like, this is gonna cost me money. But you know, even when I looked at Clover and like Square, I really looked close at Square and I had talked to her about that and I have it all written down here, um. They take a, they take a fee on every single purchase, you know, and by the time you do that, that adds up too. So by the time I went and did the research through Clover and Square and Club Caddy and Four Up. Every single person has all the same fees. Actually, Club Caddy was a little bit cheaper than Four Up, um. And even though I liked Four Up a little bit better, I chose a lesser expensive one. But every one of those, any of those point of sales, I'm sure Toast has, you know, a fee to it also. So it's like, you can't really get away. Get away without having some kind of fee. I just need to try to make up, they sell a lot of hot dogs.
I, I think you're gonna make it up with your halfway like.
Well, I mean.
To be honest.
Or the kayaks or like, I'm just trying to add.
How many other tournaments that, that, you know, never had a beverage cart go out, you know, or. All kinds of different things. You were quite a bit, so. If, uh, the rest of the councils will live with it, I'm.
Sales system.
Put it on there. The food prep.
I'm gonna start shopping.
Um.
Are you, I'll give you my number.
Well, Rory's got quite a few contacts, I'd imagine.
So the minimum for the food prep is a thousand dollar estimation.
That's just an estimate that.
I think you're still working on some history, on some legwork here, are you not?
Realistically though, the, the food prep is not, is that a this year project, Misty, or?
I would do it tomorrow if I could do it. I mean, I real, uh, the plumbing parts, they can all come in during the day. They're not cutting any concrete now. And then my original plan, I thought they were gonna cut concrete because you were gonna have to put a floor drain in downstairs, da-da-da-da. But now it doesn't sound like it's very difficult at all because the women's bathroom and the sink areas in that same area. And Kelly basic, and Kelly's the only person I talked to so far on happening Greg and Steve, but they made it sound like. This is not gonna be that difficult and it will not interrupt any of my hours of working. I mean, I can even get it done before I open.
So we can revisit the food prep.
Yeah.
And another.
Yeah, and I can get that quote from Greg.
Great.
And then the sinks and stuff that I would really, if I can, I would really like to see if Kevin could find something that's used. Cause I don't need anything super awesome, you know, for that kind of stuff, just something used. And so he is shopping for me online at some of these places and a lot of them are down in cities, but I have some connections down there. I'm even willing to just drive down there, pick this stuff up. I mean, if I can, some of the things that we were looking at was, it went for forty bucks. The sink right here was just too big. I mean, it was, it went on the auction for forty dollars. So. I'm like, um, Kevin had said too, you know, if we got something too big, we could cut the ends off and this and that. But I'd really rather not pull the trigger on something that we have to try to reconstruct and that I, that I hate it. I'd rather find something that actually fits that space and be a little bit patient with it. But the quicker I can get that kind of stuff done, I think the better, you know, so.
Keep working on your quotes.
Yes. And if I do find a sink and a hand sink that are within reason, I mean, I'll buy it. And I'll keep it in my barn if you guys don't, you know what I mean? I think I'll just tell Kevin if he sees something that feels good, that we think that works, you know, is reasonable, you know. So.
The rest of it, apart as like.
Um, obviously the flooring stuff is something that we need to think about for later down the road too, you know, especially the bathroom. But that miscellaneous stuff, um, some of those things would come with the, you know, the completion of the food prep area. It'd be really nice to have an office chair down there. I think everybody here would agree that if I had them stand up right now in front of us, meaning both their chairs. Make them miserable. Um, bun coffee pot. I don't have to have a bun. If you don't want to have a bun, I can get a cheap one too. Um, and then a new logo, why are we?
It was under five hundred dollars.
And I don't, I don't wanna constantly, you know, have to, I don't know.
That, that's kind of how it works. You constantly have to remind this council. Myself included, everybody else, that stuff does not just magically appear where you want it.
Right.
It takes, it takes some work. It takes an effort. And we will, uh. If we don't know, we can't fix it.
I know, I know that.
I know it seems redundant. Mike's had the same problem coming to us constantly. But the same thing over and over.
I just wanted to say that, um, have you checked with that A and L restaurant service?
I did. They have a brand that went for nine hundred dollars. That's all he had for me.
For a three compartment?
Yeah, okay.
And I know we got our sinks down there.
Did you? Was it used?
Yeah.
You didn't have anything. But I, I mean, I, I should probably call him back and get my new monitor list. He didn't have anything at the time.
All right. We have anything else for the golf director?
Oh, good questions. Miss you.
Where is this uh food prep area going, just out of curiosities, upstairs, downstairs?
Um, it'll be, the three compartment sink will be, okay, so you go up into the kitchen and when you get into the kitchen, you take a left and there's that big open area that's just full of junk.
Yep.
That junk will no longer be there, there'll be a sink in there and that will be the three compartment sink. The hand washing station that is, that has to be there, they're allowing me to use my kitchen sink up there. Um, so if I get this.
Stainless now, isn't it?
Yes, so that area, um, and then I I do have to put like that stuff on the wall. Yeah, whatever, yeah, and then, um. Then my upstairs, once I have a three compartment, I could start making pizzas upstairs right away. Because that whole area would be food prep then, so technically I could run up and down the stairs if I needed to, and I will do that if I need to. Um, and then the reason I'm doing the hand washing station downstairs is because she's allowing me to consider my three compartment sink, my food prep area upstairs. Enough for me to be able to um bring my pizza ovens and stuff like that, have that all set up by my cash register downstairs. So the, when you go into the office where the time clock is, which won't be there anymore because we're gonna have that in our software program. That wall right there is where I put a hand washing sink.
Okay.
And actually, that hand washing sink or a nice deep sink. Should have been down there anyways, I can't fill up a bucket of water and do good cleaning downstairs, the only sink that's downstairs is the. One that I would go into the women's restroom and try to. You know, I mean, when you guys clean your houses, you know, you typically fill up a bucket and you get down to it, you know, you don't. Run around squirting with paper towels, so it would be really nice to have that hand washing sink down there, so fill up some hot water. And then use the sink, you know, so that will be in that office area. And then, I I don't think I have to change the flooring necessarily right away with that one, but. I mean, probably even just pulling the carpet away from that area would be enough, I don't know if this amount looks like underneath. The cement or something, I don't know.
So my my second question isn't really so much for you, Missy. I don't know how many of you were on this council. When we talked about this a year or two ago, when we talked about doing the food out there. Why was it such a snag then?
Because they wanted to build up.
It's gonna be pretty easy for Misty to do. And at one point, it was like a fifty thousand dollar hurdle for us to get through.
The way uh MTH was selling it to me was that that whole kitchen had to be better, redone. The floor had to be redone, the counters were um. MDH approval, the the middle table, we had nothing we could prep. And make sandwiches with in order to change the category license from two to one and two. So that the liquor license could change, so what I was told.
We're very concerned with the liquor license. So something, something.
And you know what, I may not be able to change the liquor license, just adding these few things, but I I can't answer that, I mean. I keep falling back to the holler, they have pizza ovens and that's it, yeah, that's all they have up there, so. I don't know what the difference is, I know we've we've had this struggle, but I think their original plan got kind of blown out of proportion. And I think what they wanted to do was do like almost like a restaurant quote upstairs, so they were putting in hoods and.
Cause they were gonna do flat, they're gonna do a grill.
Yeah.
A whole nine yards.
So I'm just doing more like concession stands, stuff that I can.
Yeah, cause you need, don't even need the stainless steel.
They didn't say anything about needing that.
You just need that board that we have. Over the.
Yep.
Kitchen now.
Yeah.
That's not under the hood.
Yep. So it's all like super reachable, I think.
That was just my question, so I think that's how the whole conversation started, was pizza oven was where it started and.
Okay.
It couldn't be done apparently and I was just wondering how all of a sudden you're getting it done when we wanted it done before.
I think there was a lot of great ideas back then and. No one really knew how to attain them and to be totally honest with you. There wasn't one person on the golf court that had the amount of time and energy to put into it that Misty's done for two and a half weeks.
Oh, that's, it's sad.
Agreed.
Is what it is.
Agreed.
Where the golf course got to, when that was something that everybody wanted two years ago.
Agreed.
I think I'm, I'll be the only one that was here. Yeah, I can't remember, I was looking, trying to remember who was here.
Rudy really wanted that to be full blown upstairs, he wanted to make sandwiches or wraps or something to that extent and. Everything that I got feedback wise is that that kitchen had to be. So, but but with, I think at that time, the golf board was going off the premise that what they really wanted to change. Was the liquor licensing first and how to attain that and what Misty's doing is. She just wants to add more to the menu.
Right.
The golf, the liquor license will change at some point by doing this.
It sounds like I did catch a gal down, so it's just from some, you know, water, even on her title was, I really missed out on her and it was actually my benefit. Because I started like kind of picking her brain about this free to stuff and she said, and I really, I. Once the dust settles on some of this stuff and I can start spinning my wheels on something new, um. The city of, what did I say, Roseville or something like that in the, down by the cities, they just had to switch over their liquor license and they're kind of. Going through the same, tripping through the same things that I'm gonna have to go through because they were worried about me too. And upgrading it, and she said there's little loopholes that you can find in that, that they'll change the verbiage for. Something for, you know, like a special situation, so I need to kind of start, you know, digging through some of that stuff and I might be. Of, you know, the Roseville golf courses, but all right, I need, how to do this and what to do, um, and that kind of sort of thing.
I think they're one of those citizens that are looking for the local sales tax, I can't remember the ones that have approved it. Are looking towards it for their golf course.
This is just a tip of the iceberg of what I've started doing, so once I get my wheels underneath me and I can start. You know, start swimming with some of this stuff, and my hands are so tied right now, I can't even order merchandise, I just switched my logo and. Just the list goes on, I just feel like I'm sitting on my hands.
You know what, the amount that you're sitting on your hands for the short time you can do, Misty is not a lot.
I know, but I'm just.
Wasn't the snag the, the actual beer vendors not adding the reaching? Because of the Minnesota thing?
Um, yeah.
But it, well, yeah, that is quick, making it. They're they're like one of the last takes that does three two.
And hopefully that maybe will work out in our favor, like maybe they'll kind of say, well, we need to come up with a way of, of, you know. Making it allowable or whatever, so. That's a little hoops to jump through, but as soon as I can keep, put some of this stuff behind me, then I'm just gonna start working on the next thing, so. Um, on that, I would also was asking, um. I had had asked Christina in in some of these groups that I'm trying to jump through, like with merchandise and things like that. Is it possible, I had asked Christina, is there a reason for the council to not allow you to have a credit card?
Whoa, whoa.
So the current purchasing policy for charging only provides the public works director and the city administrator. And the chief, chief of police to have a credit card at this time, that's all, that's. You're like, you're a director of liquor listing.
There's just certain situations that I've been working at, obviously my office at home. You know, so it's like, I got a quote for like, you know, if I get a quote for my merchandise. It's just gonna make me have to wait, right now the merchandise place that I'm looking at, if I order today, my shirts will be in in June. You know, and so I have a budget, you know, and if I can keep it within a budget or if, you know, like. I just haven't, I can't, I can't do anything without having, you know, like some of my own. And I don't think you guys want me to move more, just ask them in thirty days.
Tell them you're a government entity and have them invoice us. Set it up for the W nine and pay them, if they know we're a municipal, they're gonna get paid.
So there's no way that I can have a credit card.
No, so I'm going through a change.
I'm gonna go right back.
Change of policy.
What do you guys have to change?
Well, you're gonna have to get the rest of your department heads involved, because if you're gonna want one, then so is the. And then I gotta increase the credit limit.
I'm still waiting for you to do that.
So I gotta call the department heads.
So we got.
I just, I just think, I I think, I think I'm a trustworthy person, I don't, I don't think I'm gonna make a. I don't, I don't think that's the issue.
Show off on a statement.
Yeah, you don't. Exactly, so I don't really see what, I mean. And like, if I wanna do these special events on Friday and I need to like, you know, if I wanna, I mean. I would like to think that most of my food or any of that stuff is probably gonna come from BFF places that I've been charged, but you know, there might be some situations where. You know, if I see something that, somewhere else that I can go, oh, I'm getting these for the golf course.
And so, Max, do you want this policy at your next work session to discuss a revision?
Yeah.
Cause that's your first step.
Let's talk about it.
Okay, yeah, I mean, you can shoot me down later, but maybe if you guys want me to bring up my passy in.
Right on.
I just, I I just think there's options there, I'm not trying to play.
I mean, there's a valid point.
You, I see. It's a, it's a point.
Yeah, maybe I won't use it very often, maybe it'll just be once in a blue moon, you know, but. You know, I I did purchase a couple of things on my own little personal credit cards, I'm like, oh, I'm totally gaining this, of course. So it was like thirty five dollars here, thirty five dollars there, cause I seen it on Amazon. You know, so it's it's fine for me because I'm like, well, it doesn't matter, but. But you know what I'm saying, like, you know, I've seen this really cool, like spin the wheel and you can, you know, it's like some fun little thing that you can do for a good tournament. Well, so now what am I gonna do to order that on Amazon to have this at my tournament? Wait, yeah, ask Amazon to invoice me in thirty days, I mean, that's just not gonna work for me, so it's just little things.
No, they do have a business account.
I don't want that.
Okay.
I'll, I don't want that, I'm not gonna, I I want it.
Would it be nonprofit?
What?
No, not political.
What are the current, just out of curiosity, you know, different limits of each card?
It's fifteen hundred dollars.
Each? He's over there, man, it's a joke, it's a joke.
Well, I can, that would be more than enough for, I mean, for you, maybe that's not enough, but like for me, that's. The thing, I buy something over fifteen hundred dollars, I mean, there's nothing.
They're loading up, I mean. I'll, I'll put it on your March agenda, you will discuss it.
We will discuss it.
Okay, in in the meantime, like I can think of more examples, I just. Got it.
We're good.
I'll keep going, we got other things.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna shut you down here.
No.
No, you you do have a valid point. Um, because I I, you know, like you say, you know, you wanna order shirts or hats.
Yeah.
These and whatever. Set up net thirty days like every other department. But, I mean.
It has come across before other things that been.
Everything's so delayed and stuff, I just, it just.
Welcome to government.
Yeah, I don't know, I would like it to.
And we will.
We will discuss it.
Don't worry, it's.
In your benefit.
It's only one hand behind that now, so.
No, I'm still, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Missy.
Yeah.
All right. Now onto some really fun stuff. Oh, wait a minute. All the redistrict.
Yeah, you guys don't want me to do this.
Uh, hold the board of appeal notice.
Uh, it is what it is, really, nothing more to say about that, it's on your calendar, a second. No, you're redistricting maps, on the other hand. That will be something, this session is done.
The uh Board of Appeal and Equalization, Bobby Joe, you have a question?
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm just wondering.
It's the uh property taxes, isn't it? Yeah, you got a real. Beef with the, with the county.
Yes.
That is the, that is the time to bring it up. Now the.
Open to the public, correct? That's the one that you were talking about a while back?
Yeah, okay.
Uh, when this session is done. The city's gonna.
Session after that.
The city will have a new House representative.
Really?
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, it appears as though our current uh representation in the House has uh two A, will now be two B. Um, whomever that might be after the session is done. But it'll be after this year, so right now we're covered under.
The entire city of Blackland?
Yeah.
We're not cutting it now?
I didn't see any lines on my. No. Can't believe you remembered that conversation, that was good. Um, you're funny. You're. Your congressional, you'll still have Pete Stavert as your. Um, your congressional representation, that's not changing, however, his uh. His area of coverage is going to expand. Um, yours, the city will still be covered under Senate District Two, which is covered in by Paul Yuki. His um, his area's changing considerably. But right now in the House, um, we're under District Two A, which is Matt Russell. And after the session is done and the redistricting takes over because of the census. The city's gonna be under two B, which is currently um Representative Steve Green out of Austin. I haven't had a chance to look to see if Green is up for reelection or if his term goes through twenty three. Um, but if you look at the two districts. We will no longer be covered under two A once the redistricting takes over. Totally different area. Why would they do that? The census.
Number of people.
Yep. That's what happened with the census, those. So just so you guys know, because it's important as local elected officials to know your representation of the state. So keep an eye for that because, you know, the elections is coming, fall are gonna change a lot and. Under my impression, when I first looked at the maps, I didn't think there was gonna be any change for us, and when I gave it a closer look, there is. So it's affecting a lot of you, the local paper too, or some of our current county missionaries were thinking of running or now, but. The brakes on that, we've talked about it, down in the metro areas, a lot of that. Those lines was vulnerable, ones were changing considerably for some of the metro towns. So just wanted everybody to be aware of that. He was elected. Then I'm trying to get the personnel committee together on March third. Max, I think as far as I know that that date does work, I haven't gotten any feedback saying it's not. Um. We have a. A petition to add our, our deputy clerk to the union. And that needs to be removed, the personnel committee before I go to council for reformation. Because when the union was filed, was formed during that um position. So the MOU that got filed with the Bureau of Mediation has to be reviewed and amended. If the city chooses to accept that position. So three o'clock on March third.
I'm good.
I would have done it earlier, but I I know Shonda will be off this week as well. And then E on the League of Minnesota Cities Onsite Property Inspection, uh, Mike. It is only with historic clarify.
Awesome.
So that whole item five that forwarded you last week is null and void, I spoke to Joseph Raff. Who's representative, that's gonna come and do the onsite inspection for the remodel and the addition of the liquor store to. Take care of the liability and property insurance, because right now it's uncovered at like three hundred thousand dollars. We work the property, we know very well, we put six fifty into that addition and remodel, so that whole entire place needs to get. Reviewed, inspected, now that the project is basically done, so that the league can reevaluate our property insurance. So that's gonna happen on the third as well. On time, I'm sorry, yep, I do, and I sent it to Shonda, but I don't know if I sent it to you, um, eleven thirty, he'll be here. And I've already sent him the um, the blueprints and the asphalt and the plans and specs from what's up, Melissa.
Okay.
So he really doesn't need much except availability to. So he really doesn't need much except availability to the dock to the building. So he'll wanna see all the, all the areas.
Okay.
Might need to look at some outside stuff. I, I told him winter's horrible. You know, there's a lot of things he's not gonna see. You know, the parking lot was done. There were some improvements outside, but, um, they're busy too. Any questions about that? The liability and the property insurance quotes are not back yet for twenty-two to twenty-three yet. So I imagine that's why they're doing it now so that that can get reevaluated. So when they do get, um, our renewals, it'll include the improvements. What we've probably budgeted in the liquor budget for those two liabilities probably gonna be increased. Just so you know, most likely be what we spent. I can't imagine it's gonna be less. I mean, there's, there's, there's things that were put in place with the addition, you know, suppression and the air-to-air exchange rooms and some of these things, but all in all, it's a big building. And the last thing I, um, wanted to report and I'm glad, um, Misty's here since she and I are kind of hook hands with Beach Committee is, um, our committee met a couple of weeks ago. Um, and we're moving forward with our phase three, which is, um, the pavilion addition to the beach area. I am, um, pleased to report that we have a private donor that is gonna fund the remaining funding we need of twenty-four thousand dollars.
That's.
I would do that. Where's the money coming from this?
Isn't that awesome?
Very, uh, so I just kind of provided to you guys kind of a sketch. We're using the same, um, contractor that did the bathrooms and the estimates for the lumberyard materials are in here.
Assuming they wish to remain anonymous.
Uh, for now until we get the ball rolling, but, uh, no, it will be anonymous forever.
So who's paying up the eight hour tab?
I think.
Who's paying up the eight hour tab?
You.
We, we have some funding already left over from case three, so.
It probably doesn't mean that we're not gonna maybe run around and still, um, try to find some funding because, um, I think, like just to put the cherry on top, you know, if we could still, we were kind of working on some ideas of how we were gonna try to find some funding and then we found this, but like in the end, we would really like our pavilion will be sitting, you know, right in front of the beach and then the bathroom is offset from that. It'd be really nice to do a sidewalk to connect the two. And I think like you've talked about, like the handicap accessibility. But once they get on, you know, to the pavilion, like they'll be able to use the handicap, you know, the, a sidewalk instead of like trying to, you know, go through the, um, we probably would finish up with maybe some sod, maybe some rocks to divide the two where your parking is and how you work with my two one, like a solid plan for how we're gonna divide, you know, two and just a couple of like cherry on top things. So I think maybe it's gonna help us so that the concessions are, we're kind of done, but we're not done. So our whole hope is that on the sell type funding is gonna push us past the finish line with the phases that we've worked on. And we'll be like, there you go.
Yeah.
We're done.
Oh, that's nice.
Feedback on a March work, March work session in my absence, I kind of.
What's happening?
Okay, that'll tell Paige. She'll be your point person on that.
Cause we'll, we meet before the, the next, uh, planning commission meeting, correct?
You have a March council meeting on the seventh, planning commissions the sixteenth and your work session would be the twenty-first.
Okay. Rue Wilson came in there before. Cause they need to appoint a maybe chair.
Are you only open one chair? We have two seats.
So if you have another one, I know of someone.
Your council meeting is the seventh?
Yeah.
The planning commission is the sixteen. Your work session would be the twenty-first.
Okay.
Seven, sixteen, twenty-one. All right, you're welcome back. Would you like to make the motion to adjourn?
I'm most. One second.
There we go.
I'm sorry.